Have a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, so after that, I'm gonna make the motion for the committee to continue pursuing work on the agri park.
Second.
Second by Cabal. How do you vote? Melvin?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
No.
Okay, five we're not doing. Six, resolution number twenty-one seventeen C.
Set the date. Saturday for barbecue.
July twelfth.
Yes.
Need a motion set the date.
So moved.
By Renzo. Second by Cabal. How do you vote? Melvin?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, in that thing.
Oh.
You gotta send me that map for us.
What?
The map. You can't share it? No? Make. Steve's sending you, you can't share the map.
Huh?
Are we on number seven?
Not yet.
Who said you can't?
Are we on number seven? That was stuff, it was discussed in closed session, we cannot be talking about it right now.
No.
Okay. Seven. Seven.
Ordinance number twenty-one forty-four C. We had the first reading on this and Jason, at this time, I'll let just five minutes, we've had a long meeting because you've been here a couple of times talking.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll give you the privilege to do that.
Okay. So I guess I don't fully understand if some of the ordinance has been explained a little bit to me, but my understanding is is that we're gonna pass a ordinance so that if I would park on my own property, that I would potentially get a citation for public nuisance. Um, my understanding is, is that this, like going this route, I don't necessarily think solves your guys' issue. Um, it's, uh, my understanding is, is let's say I parked something on there, you got, I have seven days, like I get issued a warning or something, I have seven days to move it or correct the action before I potentially get a citation. Um, my frustration is a couple of things. I have, uh, been here now just close to a year, who have been talking about this easement. Um, I, you guys yourself, like I've talked to Beverly, your guys' previous attorney or whoever with this. Um, she, you guys put a whole agreement together for the easement to make it all official, you get filed with Guthrie County, to make this all official. And you guys did it without even notifying me or giving me an opportunity to speak or be a part of the conversations. From day one, like you guys put together things saying, hey, let's work together on this, come up with a solution. And during that time, nobody even contacted me other than told me that you guys were gonna vote on something. Um, I've been here very respectfully like this whole time. I've, I've even, with your guys as one, you guys put together, I think it was two meetings previously. You guys, uh, put together an agreement and against my own lawyer's advice, which I sent you guys their review of it. Uh, I was willing to sign it, just though my only, my only struggle is being the property owner, paying full taxes on the property and losing basically like my rights to it in the sense, I can't park anything in my home even temporarily on my own ground that I pay taxes on. You know, there's a gate there that you guys essentially control access and, and most of the way for. Um, the school has keys to open it up without any notification for me. Um, I came home like this last time, and my understanding, I've heard like different things, like this is emergency access. So it's, it's, it's open for emergency use for vehicles such as police officers or fire departments or whatever be the case. But then like the school opens it up, doesn't notify me, I come home and there's a car and a boat parked in my yard when they had the graduation. Nobody had the courtesy even say, hey, you know, we won't open this up for four or five hours, we need to let cars in and out of here. Someone will be by eight or nine or ten o'clock to close the gates. I mean, we're like in the middle where this is gonna go to litigation. Um, if we can't come to an understanding agreement, we're prepared to file on it. Um, and to me, it's worth my property value to where essentially you guys are saying, you want full control of my property, you guys are refusing to maintain it. I take on liability with this property and you guys aren't willing to work with me. My, my thing, you guys can pass this, I'm not arguing you guys can't pass any ordinance that you want to involving this road or that, I, I just don't think it, it solves your guys' issue. And secondly, my challenge would be to challenge the access easement itself. I've now asked the city now multiple times for approval for the easement or send my lawyer all paperwork involving the easement. And the only thing I've gotten through emails, and I have those emails, if anybody here would like them, is just a Wumble plaque saying that there's a thirty-foot access easement there, not concrete access, or not concrete easement, nothing involving the season other than here's a Wumble plaque. And that's it. So like, at least have the courtesy to send over the information, we'll review it and decide, hey, this is something where, you know what I mean, that, um, is there and we need to work together on, but so far I haven't been, or my lawyers have not been provided that. So our position is, you can pass this ordinance, but I've contacted the police department when they, people were parking out there and were opening the gates up without notifying me. It happened twice this last month. Um, I contacted the police department and they're like, well, we can't get involved, you know, because like we don't know, we haven't seen all the, the stuff on the easement, we don't know if it's an enforceable easement. Um, so it puts them in the middle and, uh, someday, you know, like let's say chain it up and block access to it. You guys are gonna need it in an emergency, you got to send a police officer out there, how's he gonna cut the gates if you guys don't show me that there's, there's an actual easement on, on my property? It's your guys' burden of proof to provide that, to provide that easement act at the very minimum, to provide the same that there's an easement on my property. It's not my burden of proof to say, yes, you guys have rights to my property, like, thi- this is getting ridiculous, like I've been very respectful. I've even, like I said, I've been willing to sell you the property. I mean, litigation, I'm sure you're, that's your attorney, you ask him what it's gonna cost to litigate this thing. You know, I've already offered to buy the horse section off just that portion of the property, buy it at a reasonable price and do whatever you want with it. You know, I don't care. Like you're gonna spend that one way or another, we're going to litigation because I'm gonna fight it. So, uh, we're prepared to do that, you guys can vote how you want to, very respectfully. I just don't think that this ordinance, what you guys are prepared to do, you're gonna spend thousands in attorney fees to pass an ordinance. If I sell it, another owner is gonna still be able to park on this easement, a police officer would have to come by, say, hey, you have seven days to move your RV or whatever on here. And then even then, you can still question, okay, officer has to give you a citation. I don't know that the police department is prepared to do that or seeing enough on the easement to say it's an enforceable easement. What you guys are trying to do, my attorneys are saying, I have every right as the property owner and the taxpayer to park and use my property. So even if the easement is valid, you guys do not have a right of way on my property, nothing's been filed to that effect. I haven't found anything with Guthrie County. Um, so send me over the information, the lawyers will review it. We're prepared to go to litigation on it, I guess, if that's what we need to do, but I'm trying to become here, be reasonable with you guys because obviously I don't wanna spend ten grand on litigation. But it's also half the value of my property. You know, if I sell the property, there's a value that goes with it, if you have to sell the new owner, hey, you have to pay five grand in taxes on this property. Well, guess what? You can't park or use that portion of it, can't build on it, can't do anything with it. So I guess if anybody else here was the owner of that property and was going through what I go through, you'd have the same concerns. Um, from when this started, I incurred damage on my own property just from the other date being done and nobody cares about, you know, cars pulling on, turning around my yard. I submitted pictures of that. Um, you know, I reseeded my yard. I mean, it's like, don't, you know, I, I anchor all those, those charges. Again, I'm being respectful in the sense, I want, I'm not saying that I don't want you guys to have access to use it. It's getting ridiculous when this is the direction I go. I mean, even pedestrians still walk back and forth on it, you know? Every night there for a while with the masks and everything, I could pick up ten masks in my yard every night when the school got out. You know, it's just like, it's not a sidewalk, it's not a pedestrian walk. You know what I mean? There's, there's sidewalks provided for the school to use in that manner. If the school wants to use the easement, why don't you guys work something out with the school where during the winter time, they remove the snow off of it so kids can walk on it without slipping and falling and breaking their leg? You know, they, they're still, in my opinion, there's still, uh, a liability there with doing no maintenance. You know, I mow it, I do snow removal, I do all that stuff. I just wonder, I did do that. I think for what you guys are asking is completely unreasonable. I don't know which way a Guthrie County judge will go on it, but to say you want all these rights on this property, you don't wanna maintain it, you don't wanna do snow removal, you don't want the liability, and oh, by the way, you don't want me to park on it, I mean, I don't know, I'm willing to find out.
So Jason, I have a question. If the school opened up the gate and there was a vehicle and a boat there, they were stuck there because the other end of the gate was shut, right?
No, it was open.
Who opened it?
They opened both of them. They have keys to the, the one key for both sides.
Well, the school opened it.
Yeah, they opened both sides.
They opened it during graduation.
Yeah.
And that's, and I think that part of the school's thing of having that also was if there was a large crowd that they had, the overflow could come out that way if needed.
But my understanding, when you can look at some minutes of these meetings, my understanding was is you guys are calling that an emergency access. In a lot of these meetings, you guys are called, now you want it as an access easement, but also an emergency access easement. Under the law, how can you just label it whatever you want?
I was on the school board when, when that was put in there. And discussion from the school board was, is that's an access to get out. If we have a ball game and all of a sudden we pull out and we've got an accident there, they have got all that traffic backed up there. Or if they pull out the other side and they have an accident, this is an escape to get cars out of there.
Right.
It's also if they have an overabundance of cars and stuff, yes, they could use that for that. But that was it. There was nothing else for kids to walk on or anything else, so.
And it's just turned into everything.
But, but, but I have another question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
My own property and I know, I knew exactly what I was getting the day that I signed those papers.
And I, I didn't, mine was.
I, I, that's what I'm asking you, why didn't you know exactly what you were getting?
They didn't have everything disclosed and that's part of the.
So they, they were.
That it was.
Buy it from?
Uh, I bought it from a pre- previous person built on it and sold it out there, I think it was brandy. Um, I bought it through, uh, real estate was out of Des Moines. And the lawyer, when he signed the abstract, has to disclose all that stuff. So that's, and when I talked to Beverly about that, that's part of the thing, all your guys' paperwork was not filed on that easement in the correct manner to have all that disclosed. So yes, it's partly on me, but it's also partly on you guys as well. I mean, I don't think when it goes to court, that all the paperwork and everything is laid out on that, which is why Beverly wanted to sign that agreement to make it all official and have something in place for when I sold it, she said, when you sell the property, the next homeowner, homeowner needs to be advised of what's going on with this.
Yes, immediately, if you, you know, I guess if it was my property, I would wanna know.
But if you see a private, uh, private drive on there, how am I supposed to assume that everybody in the city of Stewart has access to it where it's supposed to be there? I mean.
It's not supposed to be, it's not, everybody in Stewart's not supposed to have access.
Well, I know, but it was all opened up.
And at that, at that time when that was all done, there were no houses there.
Yeah.
It was, you know.
Exactly, since, since it's been sold, so you guys, I hate, you guys have this in place, but he developed the land, he sold the property with it on it and then he built after the fact. So I understand where the loopholes happened. Um, I get it, but it's also like I have my frustrations with it and I've been very open to working with you guys.
So but. The last part, this part. Now, this should have been done day one, so it wasn't blocked, so the emergency exit is there.
Yeah.
Or overflow, because that's the two purposes.
But then I'd be notified when I bought the property, right? So I'd have that, you know, notification like going into it because the next homeowner devalues my property. So therefore I'm looking at different property values by saying to the next homeowner, you can't park anything out there at all.
So I got a, I got a question for you. A couple of issues, you know, you mentioned you were supposed to get the, the paperwork for the easement, right? Do you remember who you contacted on that?
Uh, for like which paperwork?
Well, you said you, you did, you just got a plat of.
Yeah, so it was, uh, Kristen with, uh, C.
She's no longer.
Yep, and I've asked the police department as well and they said they went to you guys asking for, because if they get called out for an issue, something happens on it or we have a dispute, I just wanted them to have, you know, something on it to where they said, yes, this is an enforceable easement and whether it's parking or.
Which officer did you talk to?
Um, I talked to all four of them, I talked to Dave, the police chief, and I addressed all four, but they said they would bring it up to the, um, Ash, I believe. And then you guys would just handle it with your guys' lawyers.
Well, see, that, that was my question, is that something our attorney could at least get him, some sort, if it exists? Because I've worked with mortgages before and I've seen stuff not exist that should have. And I'm not saying that's the case, but I would.
I've been with you today.
Well, it should have been, I agree, everything should have been there, but I've seen where it hasn't too.
Yes.
Um, but I think, first of all, this won't solve your problem right now, but let me get, is that we have one of our attorneys research this and get something definitive back to him, at least that. Second of all, you mentioned your, uh, you know, if we pass this ordinance, doesn't mean that we won't work with you, okay? But what, what kind of solution, what, what's your bottom line? You know, what, what are you wanting to do?
So ultimately, I either want to get rid of the road altogether and, and most people, if you talk to the city of Des Moines, like I've worked in the construction industry and talk to engineers and stuff, most people don't own a twenty-four or thirty-foot road in their backyard, it's not very typical. So, I mean, for me to even own it, it's not, what, what do I really need to, to do with it? Other than I do have my dry vault back garage, so I would need to figure out something to do with that or not use it or that would.
When you say get rid of it, just to kinda move along, are you saying like sell it or just carry it out?
The, the, so my option to you guys would be to buy it or, and then section it off, I can put my own fence up on my portion of property because my acre, or my size of lot is point five five acres, most of them around there for those small lots are point two, point two-five. So I can sell that portion off, um, and then build a fence alongside of it, you guys can do whatever you want then, I don't care. But if I own it and pay property taxes on it, then I do care.
So.
And the second solution would be to sign the easement, the original, uh, draft that you guys had, which again, that's giving you the easement, but working out something with parking, because I'm not going to give you a hundred percent control of my property with an access easement. And I don't think I have to, I'm talking to my lawyers.
And I think what kinda got cloudy there was, the easement was drafted and we gave the stuff that we said, this is how it's supposed to be and the attorney didn't draft it in that way. And so we had to go back, am I right, Melvin? Or Brian, we had to go back and have her fix the easement because it wasn't drafted.
I don't even wanna get into all that.
No, I'm just saying that that's what, that's what clouded.
She did what she was told to do.
Hold on. Sir.
Sir, if you.
Right over there.
Sir, my name's Steve Brick, I'm the city attorney, I guess, personally. Um, is this the document you were given?
Let me see here. And then, so law seventeen, yes, that's the document I was given and that's what I provided to my lawyer.
Why don't you just, I'll give you my contact information and give me a call tomorrow, so we just can get this thing going. But, um, we can talk about the easement and all your stuff.
It does because it's my property, though, you're saying like I as the homeowner can't park at any time on the property that I'm paying taxes for.
It still allows that to be resolved, we end up buying it from you, I'm not opposed to that personally.
How much you want for it? I have no idea.
That's the easiest solution, just buy it from him.
But I mean, I think that's, that's gotta go through a legal process, at least to.
I don't even know how, right? And you can work with my attorney on it too, and I don't care.
But see, that's what we wanna, that's what we wanna avoid, that's what's been going on, is a lot of back and forth, several meetings, we're just, and that's just, yeah.
That's the thing, if we're gonna go to litigation, I told you this is probably gonna cost ten or more thousand dollars to litigate back and forth with attorney fees. It's like, why don't you buy it for ten or fifteen thousand dollars? I don't know what the value of it is, I know land is a lot right now. But you're looking, if you guys go to litigation and you lose, I don't know which direction it would go, but let's say that happens, you would be looking at liquid damages and you lose access to the road altogether and it's probably what, sixty, you guys paid to have the concrete put in, it's probably what, sixty or eighty thousand dollars in concrete?
School did it. I think the school did it.
Yeah, so I mean, you have all that money that you're gonna lose by selling the property if you guys lose access to easement. I mean, plus liquid damages in the process for paying my attorney fees. So why wouldn't you buy it, attempt for the money and buy the, buy the property? I'm just saying, if you pass this ordinance to me right now, you're saying you don't wanna work with me on it in a sense that you're, you're devaluing my property and my attorney will take the same thing.
I mean, I want to give, Steve, I think we can work this for now.
Yeah, and it's just, if you devalue my, by passing this, I also incur additional liquid damages on the value of my property. Because it does bring the property, uh, you down by saying that, providing this cannot.
So. This, so Steve, we'll figure it out.
So this, this is the plat and it has that easement on it, so it should have been on your abstract represented by your broker, your, your real estate agent. So it's not our fault that that wasn't disclosed because it's right here and recorded and it would have gone through B and K to develop this and then recorded by an attorney at that point.
Is that right?
Okay.
I'm just trying to give you the details of that.
Why would you let something like that go by? Why would you, why would you split somebody's property?
But that's not, it's not being K's problem, I mean, that's not something being gated.
Councilman Asher, it's, it's running along the east edge of this property.
Yeah, I know where it's at.
Yeah.
I know where it's at.
Anyway, so if you guys can.
There, there's a big difference, is what my lawyers are telling me, there's a big difference between access easement and what you guys are trying to do with this easement. So, um, with all the factors going into it and maybe, I mean, we feel like we have a strong case, they advised me of that. I've sent over my, one of, just the emails that were between them, you're willing to talk to them or whatever. Of course, we're trying to not incur a bunch of fees here, I'm open to whatever, but I'm telling you that I'm going to litigate this if you guys proceed down this course. That's up to you guys, I'm not saying that is like whatever, I just can't have half my property.
Right.
And I think I told you, you're gonna get with that Steve Brick.
Yeah.
And you guys work something out.
Yeah.
If you can't work it out, we'll go to litigation.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, how's that?
And get fair price. What he just bought.
Yeah.
All right, what good was that?
You just. Done with that, Jason?
I think, okay, I'll get parked home, yeah, we'll just do it that way. So can you guys hold off on the vote until they pass this until we have that, that guy? Hold on.
I would recommend continuing with the vote, uh, you know, the parking, this is an access easement for overflow parking, I've heard even him say for graduation. Uh, traffic flow, uh, control, obviously for most, uh, safety and fire regulations, having multiple accesses to a high school.
Since then, it's important. So why do we wanna go along with this vote? I mean, why don't we wait, let him talk to you?
That's gonna happen anyway.
Straighten it out.
No, I, I don't wanna, if you guys go down this route and you guys go down and pass this tonight, then I'm gonna go towards litigation. That's.
Oh, that's fine, you don't wanna talk?
No, I do, I've just been here a year now.
I thought you just spent fifteen minutes saying one that you saw.
Absolutely, I've been here a year, ask them, you haven't been present today, so I've been here for a year now, talking.
So, so this is the way I'm seeing it, is we're saying we'd like to pass the ordinance, so there's no parking on it, okay, right? So if something happens, we have access to it, people can get on there. You talk to, uh, Steve, if you can't work anything out, then you can always litigate it.
But you're still passing.
It won't pass tonight anyway. We don't have enough votes for it, it's the second reading, I can't do the third reading.
I'm just saying whenever it passes, that's when I draw the line where we're.
Okay, so we're not easy to.
So we can do a second reading, is what Dick's saying, but in July, we would have to do the third reading, so.
So second reading then.
So in between then, hopefully they can work something out.
Just whenever this passes, then I'm.
So it's not final, it's not final.
Right, this is not final.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but get Steve's information, for sure, okay?
I think you'll find him, he, he'll be very, you work with and, and we can probably get somewhere with, you work.
Ideally, there would be a transfer of ownership, in my opinion, to the city to, you know, have that be an access point, to take that headache away. Do what you talked about, so you can put up a fence that you're wanting to do.
Yeah.
And there's no more discussion about it.
Yeah, I just think it's.
If we get there efficiently, yeah, that would be more efficient to me, that's what we've been trying to get to. But the parking thing should have been done when the easement was put in before any home you built, so it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I know, but now it was sold, so now like being the owner of that land, if you pass that, it does directly value my land, devalue it for the next order, we'll buy it. So that's where I'm talking about in the.
Are you gonna tell them?
I would dispose it, yes.
But see, that issue is with your real estate agent, not with the city.
But I'm also told that there's supposed to be things on file, I don't know much about.
It is on file, that's what Steve was trying to tell you on this.
One of our developments, it should be on.
On this plat, this final plat is in your abstract and it shows the easement directly right on there, that's what Steve was trying to tell you, is it was in your abstract, it was there. So if you didn't get informed about it, that's on your real estate, people not.
To the extent of everything that everybody's wanting to do with this road as far as coming into the maintenance, I don't know, I, I, I'm willing to send that stuff over, all my lawyers are doing it, they've reviewed that portion of it. But, um, and Beverly reviewed this as well. But if, if you're going back to that side of it, I don't think with all the things that come into account with this access easement, you're overstepping your bounds as far as access easement. That's what my lawyers are saying, with all the factors that mitigate into this. I'm willing to let a judge find out what a judge is gonna say and I'm willing to pay for that and put the retainer down. We have, I've had two lawyers review it, two separate lawyers, and we're prepared to move forward. So I, I'm fine with whatever you guys wanna do, I just.
Either sit down and talk with Steve and go with that or just go to litigation, wondering why you're the other.
And just so you're. We need to move on.
Pay insurance every year and we just turn it into a law. So it wouldn't cost us anything other than our insurance.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion for the second reading here?
Second reading.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
By Renzo?
We're with the second.
Second.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. How do you vote? Melvin?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Dick, Steve's gotta go, he's got a better engagement.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, eight, resolution number twenty-one sixteen C, Google cigarette. Moved by.
Second.
Second by Asher. How do you vote? Melvin?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Okay, storm sirens, anybody here talk about that?
Well, uh, I think Josh had to leave for his fire meeting, but I think it's all right there when he told you, come to Ash about it.
We received bids that the grant we applied for, we received three bids, that's all in the packet. And rescue, so it's the fire department choose the one that it's mentioned here.
How much did we get on the grant?
Uh, I think we got forty-seven, I'm not sure, but I can give you that information.
That's fine. If you're.
Around forty-seven.
I think it's forty-seven-five.
Forty-seven-five.
I'll, I'll make the motion to move forward with the fire department's recommendation to move forward with unplugged wireless.
Second by Renzo, second.
I'll second.
Second by Cabal, how do you vote? Melvin?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Rescue in, Sean, you get to talk.
Uh, yeah, well, I'll maybe break since. So we had talked a couple about, uh, the purchasing a new ambulance. Initially, we had thought about, uh, uh, just having it remounted, which would save us some money. While some of the safety features, like the four blind harnesses and stuff like that, costs an exceptional amount to add to an existing box. So as you can see in the, the packet, that's the contract we got. We had three or four different companies bidding, if you will. Um, the last two were essentially, you know, I think there's about a thousand dollars difference. The one thing I wanna note is that that's not the final price, it could change one to two percent in most. Um, and also there's two things, if we pay fifty percent within thirty days of signing the contract, we can save twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, a hundred percent, you can save thirty-five hundred dollars, but I don't know that we need to do that. But that number can change based just on, you know, how much the graphics cost and then those kind of things. Um, otherwise, you know, I'm not sure what kind of questions you guys have about that.
I have a lot of questions, sorry.
I'm ready.
I'll make it very quick.
No, that's.
Okay, so do you have a spec of the ambulance that you're looking at?
Yeah, yep, um.
So you have everything, all the, the nooks and crannies worked out and you have all the, the extra bonuses, like.
And I've got three of these copies, so I don't know if somebody else wants one. So what we've been doing mostly is working with drawings here like this, um, where you kinda just go through and you look at, okay, this is this side, this, that side, whatever. And then you get down to this, which is every fine detail to build the ambulance, you know, that's which locks you want and which lights you want and all that other stuff. So mostly we've been on this and then once we sign this contract, um, we can go really to drill down and finalize the agreement.
And have you went with any other distributors, any other vendor type people to see what, this is our spec and this is, your bid is X, your bid is X and your bid is X?
Yeah, so we had three companies that, and this, um, Plaza Coach was one of the other ones that was, uh, essentially equivalent. Um, and their quote came in at one fifty-seven. Um, you know, again, these are, that was, that's not like build spec because you wouldn't do that until after you sign the contract anyways, but and then another company came in like right at about a hundred and sixty, just over that. So we did our best to make those, um, build as close as possible between, you know, the three.
I'm just, I'm nervous signing a contract with a rough number and then we start, or you or whoever starts making changes and then we're locked in to paying whatever the end prices. So I don't want to sign a contract saying, yeah, we're gonna work with Bell Fire and three months down the road, we're now up to three hundred thousand or whatever it may be because we decided to do air suspension or different seat belts or different equipment and stuff like that, I just, it makes me very nervous to actually enter into a contract without being able to review because we weren't provided any of this and what the other bids were. I mean, because normally like, you know, whoever it may be, they say, okay, we're gonna, we wanna buy this. Here's our specs, here's our bids, and it gives us a chance to review it before we say, okay, we're gonna sign a contract legally binding us with this company. And whether it's a hundred and fifty-five, as you've shown here, or two hundred, three hundred down the road, we're still stuck paying that, I mean, we don't have, I don't know, if that makes sense. I think just, it makes me very nervous to sign a contract and commit us to something without seeing anything.
Right, cause, cause, did you say you wouldn't get final specs until you signed a contract? You wouldn't know exactly what you want until you, you signed a contract?
Well, not necessarily, if you gave them a spec sheet and said, this is exactly what we want.
Right.
They could price that out, right? Um, so the main point of signing the contract, um, especially the sooner the better, is right now, there's a twenty-two to twenty-six week wait on just the chassis itself. So we have six months. So we have six months until they even can start building the ambulance, right? So we got it down to a point where you're really not going to be adding liquid suspension or thousands of dollars worth of things. It's, you know, let's move this electrical outlet over here and that changes the bid fifty dollars. Um, you know, those kind of things. So. You know, and you won't know about graphics until they put them on there. So that can easily, you know, doesn't matter what they quote you, you know, so, um, you know, those.
For, for points of reference, how much is a used, how much is a used, you get one from, uh, that's three years old from, uh, Panora? What would that unit cost you?
I, I mean, obviously a lot of variables. Let's say, I mean, this equivalent model in a three-year-old ambulance would probably. Let's say it's got less than forty thousand miles on it, probably, I would say in seventy-five to a hundred thousand range.
Okay. And then if you bought a new one, what would that cost?
Hundred and fifty?
A brand new one?
Yeah, about what he's got here.
That's what he's got here.
Yeah, and I'm.
So when I went back and looked at your, uh.
I don't know.
Presentation here a few months ago. You had, you had a, a new one about a hundred and sixty thousand. You had a, a remount at about a hundred and ten, somewhere around in there, and then a used one around eighty thousand. That was a few months ago when you did a presentation, when we were buying members. You talked about it. So this is kind, I was, I was kind of wondering, I thought there's a bigger price difference between the remount and the new one.
How much is a remount again?
About a hundred and ten. So that's what he had back in. When, when did you do that? May, March, April, March?
Uh, February was when we talked about, uh, the memo ambulance.
Okay, so it was back in, in there. I went back through the minutes and saw your presentation.
I'm not too much concerned with the price difference. It's just, I don't want to get locked into something with a certain company. And then stuff gets changed or something happens and then we're stuck paying Feld, whatever that price may be.
You're not, you're saying they don't.
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished.
Oh.
Because we weren't provided any of this other information for us to review and we don't have final specs. I'm. I don't know. I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that.
You, we used to be on a seven-year rotation for rescue units. How, that was when Jeff Howard was here. How long has it been since the last rotation?
Well, this one we're.
I'm not talking a used one, I'm talking about a new one, which the blue one was the last one we bought was new. Do you remember when that was?
Twenty-twelve. And then this one we're replacing is a two thousand and six.
Sean, Brian and I was talking earlier, can you go to an expert like Joe Huff and ask him what he puts as far as bells and whistles?
It's a point of reference, since we're spending this kind of money.
If you're a hundred and fifty thousand, so we know, how much did you have to pay extra, Joe, to get you up and ready, Joe?
Well, and that's why I talked to three.
No, I mean, just, yes or no, can you do that?
Yeah.
Were you okay doing that?
Yeah, no, I thought, well, I mean, they just, I was just part of, not part of, but talking to the people, they just purchased two Mercy ambulance and, you know, talking with them over the design.
So you're getting some of your information on ordering this from them?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'm just asking.
So, and I had gotten a bid from two places, so. So remounting is kind of hard because one, only so many companies will do it, and two, it's. They decide what they're gonna remount, what they're not. So you could say, somebody could say, oh yeah, I'll do that for a hundred and twenty thousand, and then you send it to them and they're like, no way, bro.
So there's a thirty to forty percent difference in there. Do you have problems? It means it depends what they choose to remount, or are the remount issues that you, that you have more than likely anyway, or what?
So we got a quote from Arrow to remount ours. They said they would do it, that's fine, they, they'll do pretty much everything. And the quote was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. When I asked them to put a, the set of shelves right here on the, the side. The curb side, and then to put the four-point harnesses, which is the safety standard starting in twenty-twenty-two. Um, they said, well, it'll be five to seven thousand per seat for the four-point harnesses on top of the hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Plus the, you know, five hundred or a thousand bucks or more to put a cabin sec in there so that you can reach everything from your seat and your seatbelt. So it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand plus another ten to fifteen thousand to put those. You know, essentially two simple things in because a brand-new ambulance comes standard with the four-point harnesses now. You know, so you're already up to a hundred and forty-two thousand or whatever.
Gotcha.
To.
And you would already have that incorporated in your one fifty-five on a new machine.
Correct, yeah.
And, and I think it's worth it to go with, I mean, that's not what I'm, I think it's worth it to go with the new ambulance because you know everything is new. My concern is, is signing a contract without seeing final specs, final numbers, and getting closer to that, I just.
I agree, I mean, that.
That it makes me.
Buy a car, you get the whole list of what's in it.
Right, it just, it makes me nervous to sign a contract.
I think we need to trust, I think we need to trust the rescue people. They, every, you know, if you ever work on an ambulance, you talk to other people that come in there with different ambulances all the time. I mean, you go into hospital, you talk to those people. Well, I think he's a good, has a good judgment of what he's putting in his ambulance and to make sure that it's in.
I'm just, I'm asking for more numbers. Like, I want to see the numbers. It's not that I, I'm saying you're wrong for putting this in or you're right. I mean. Obviously, we're gonna go with your judgment on what you want.
We're spending a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
I just want to see it. Well, not a complete itemized list, but I would like.
What else would you?
I would have liked to have this two days ago.
We're gonna add to this, and I actually talked to the guy today, is if you look on here.
I don't know. I just, I don't think this is enough information.
I think it's three or four.
I mean, you want me to, you want the fire department or the cops to come to you and say, I want a hundred and fifty-five thousand, but I don't know what I'm gonna say. You wouldn't be okay with that?
So this.
And honestly, you guys were up in arms about the police department spending sixty-two thousand dollars.
So we're gonna add a shelf. Cause that's the way. Um, and I talked to the guy today, said, you know, at most, he goes, I'm gonna highball you just because I don't want to give you a number that would be too low. He goes, three hundred and fifty would be the most cost to put that in. Otherwise.
Three hundred and fifty bucks.
And that would be the only extra thing you'd be adding to this, you think?
I think so, um.
I, I guess, so I guess that's kind of where maybe some of the. Holdup is, is, you know, it's, I think so, you know, you see what I'm saying?
I get it, yeah, yeah.
If you lock into this company and you go, well, I think so, well, maybe I'm gonna add that. I'm not saying a word, uh, on that, you know?
When, when we do a bond for this, we do a bond based off of this and the payback based on what Chip does for us, so we make sure we get this paid back, obviously, like we've done the prior ones. And so if we tack things on after that, that wasn't figured into the financial plan, make sure it gets paid back the way it's supposed to. So the. Her point is, you set a number and you can't, you can't break it.
Yeah, that's.
So that's, so she wants to know everything behind the number, which is the right thing to do.
No, I, and I, and I understand that. So. So the point of signing the contract, right, because we don't actually say them anything until we receive it, and if we don't approve it, they don't even give it to us. So, you know.
Even though we're still under contract.
Yes, um, is that. The longer we wait, so let's say we're like, okay, well, we want to see your itemized list or whatever, well, then we're gonna push that back to the July meeting. Well, if we wait four more weeks, then you're looking at probably another six, you know, your timeframe goes out six to eight months, and then you're. Three plus months on that to get it actually built. So now, instead of a February or a March timeframe for receiving a brand-new ambulance. You're looking at like April, May, June of next year before it even gets in the hand. What this does is when we sign this contract, it says. We're gonna buy it from you and put our name on a chassis, because they can't buy one from Chevy until they have an agreement to purchase it.
But with, from a, from a city perspective, and I wish you was still here, but what I've always been under the impression of, the moment you put a dollar sign in a motion, it's basically an implied contract. So we're, we're under obligation for this. We can't just turn around and rescind it after a company takes action and, I mean, that's the. So we have to wait thirty days to be safe. I'm, I'm in that corner every time. I don't care about thirty days.
And I think what you were trying to say, if, if I got it right, I don't know, is that you just want to contract, say, hey, we're gonna buy from you.
Correct, yes. We're, we're picking a company.
We're picking you as the company, and then you would come back with a final number and present it to the council.
Yeah, but if we haven't seen that contract, how do we know what we're signing and agreeing to? Because that letter says a hundred and fifty-five.
That, that's, that's true.
And we don't have another contract in front of us. So, I mean, I would like to see this just tableed another month.
Yeah, I want you to.
I'd like to see a table to July so we can gather more information because there's just not enough there. And I'm not okay with signing a contract with a number on it and then us being legally obligated.
Would you guys be okay with saying, um, okay, uh, once you get the contract, once you get this drilled down. As long as it's under one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, we can go ahead and Ash can put some pen on that or, you know, the bank on that and then carry forward with that.
I mean, the information you just handed out, uh, the itemized stuff, I think that's what these guys with their backgrounds are wanting a chance to look at, and it just got handed out. So that's, I think.
With whose background?
So, so what I'm saying is that like, you know, next Wednesday or Thursday, I'll meet with Pat and we'll go over this and we'll have this. Pretty much down next Wednesday or Thursday. So then I have three more weeks before you guys are in session again and then.
A lot of towns meet twice a month. I mean, it, it's always been a once a month thing. A lot of towns we want twice a month if needed.
And I'm not trying to hurt you guys, I'm just, I'm just trying to say I want to get, I want to get us on the list as soon as we can so that, you know, we can show you guys, hey, we got ambulances.
Just get them, just get them a list of stuff. We'll go from there.
He gave us a list, but it.
But I mean.
Make sure that everything's on there and a contract signed and everything ready to go with everything on there, everything that you possibly want. Anything you could think about, just put it, just put it on there and get a contract for it.
But I mean, is anybody opposed to that number, I guess, is.
I'm not opposed to it.
Making a motion, but kind of a, I don't see any issue with Ash. I mean, you've, this has been a nine-year thing on a seven-year rotation normally, so I don't, I mean, what, what did the last one cost?
That type one would have been, uh, way more than.
I thought it was a hundred and eighty the last time, honestly.
For me, it's not the cost, it's. Contract part of it.
That was eight years ago.
The part that you're signing something that you're legally obligated to without us even looking at it.
Do you think we need more?
No, no, you think the other one was more than a hundred and eighty?
If you bought it today.
No, 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 I'm saying two thousand and twelve, I wonder what that number was.
That, it could have been a hundred and eighty or twenty. You know, I'm not familiar with what the pricing is. I also do know that, so Medex, who is one of the other, or Bosser Coach. Who also had given us a bid, he was telling me that July first is when they increase their prices and they're looking at a two to three percent increase.
Tell them we'll go someplace else.
Well, I, I mean, I already told them.
Tell them we want a three percent discount.
Well, then he'll tell us to go somewhere else.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get the information they need and presented in July.
Okay.
Where we're gonna work with them, see what kind of information they need. So we'll come to July, we'll have everything that they need. Very much we know what they want, but we'll check with them again. And I will do that with them.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven, State Center Culture Center Grant Agreement.
So moved.
By Renzo.
And what do we, what do we vote on here?
Well, I reviewed it before.
You really vote?
I reviewed it too. Okay, I asked a question. I don't, any smart remarks from you?
I just made a motion.
Just heard what I said.
You want to explain what it is, Ash?
That agreement between the city and globally, that these pros are logic is to. Was a conscious.
I'll second. Okay, okay, I got a question to ask about this. Now, they're in business and, and they're making money with what they do. Do they have to pay taxes?
It's nonprofit.
Okay, answer that.
Yeah, this needs to be referred, there's utility items in here as well. But there's, there's utility, so you don't think, if you're all right with this, I'd like to add that referral to the utility board to address.
Yes.
The items in there, because we're not acting on that.
Okay, the motion was.
Yes, no, that would be my motion.
And refer it to.
Okay, moved in second. How do you vote, Beldon?
Yeah.
Cabal? Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
No.
Okay, two different ones here, Ash.
Yeah, we're just gonna act on B.
Oh, well.
Can we talk about A? Are you gonna talk about A?
At the time, I'm still here.
Oh, okay, yeah, because you wanted to give.
I know, but I think there's more to it.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, on A, there were some cleanup items from when we met last month. Uh, there were a couple of things. One, they hadn't seen, there's some pavement that cracked that hadn't been sealed. They, they do have that done. I looked at it. Jim, I hope, Jim, he's not here.
Corey's here.
Corey's here, if you got a question.
Uh, when we talked to Jim, that, when, looking at it, Jim's concerned that the grass is not taking hold out there. I went and looked before the meeting, there is grass actually growing underneath, but there's a whole bunch of weeds growing on top of it. Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
So.
To clean that up a little bit. There's, I guess, we're playing on a bunch of thistles out there, so. The Development Corporation has worked with John Schwanger to, uh, to try to get that done. He had a couple of guys quit, but it's supposed to be done this week. Just, just the mowing in the spring.
Yeah.
But not regarding what you're talking, I mean, what you're getting out of the grass isn't working.
Right, so, I, I think, I mean, it's spotty, but I, I went and walked out there everywhere, and there is grass growing underneath. But, you know, Jim and I, we're still looking at this. Our recommendation was to, to table it until the next meeting so we can, and get, figure out what's going on.
And maybe what Schwanger sprays and mows and maybe we can see what's underneath all those weeds. I mean, it looks terrible out there.
Would it be at that point, we would talk about liquid damage damages if there was cost to create a city to do anything?
If there was.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ford.
Thanks, Ford. Okay.
For forty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Correct, so moved.
By Renzo, second by Beldon. How do you vote, Beldon?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher? Thirteen, agreement for maintenance and repair.
That's what we knew to the existing agreement that we have with the state.
That motion for years.
Yes.
So it's just the same thing we can do.
Yeah. Okay, moved by Cabal, second by Renzo. How do you vote, Beldon?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Okay, hotel motel?
So this is currently set at five percent, uh, like a dare has this at seven. Is this anything that anybody wants to look at to increase from five to seven and put on a ballot or whatever? Because we've increased our expenses on police, without hiring this helps with that.
A lot of people.
The way the money's distributed, that goes to EMS and, uh, buyer as well.
A lot of people paid off of that.
What's that?
There's a lot of people paid off of a hotel motel tax.
It's seven percent.
From that money.
It's seven percent in a dare and five percent in.
It's seven percent in a lot of places. It's five percent.
Five here, so we want to look at raising it.
He was just having a request for a rescue unit. I'm saying it's, it's an interstate-based incurred expense or paid tax, and so if there's no interest in that, I'm just saying there's a lot of requests coming. And rather than raising taxes.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, we're looking for.
It would be better to have the interstate paid for the rescue unit, uh, you know, that type of stuff.
Yeah.
Police have been called up numerous times to the hotels.
And it would help with the deficit there. So I'm just, I'm asking, and if we don't want to do it, I'm.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, if you want to proceed, because we're gonna take it to the lawyers to repeal the decision and put it on the pad.
I would make that motion.
Go ahead, Brian, what?
I just want to make sure everybody's thought or talked.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
By Renzo.
Yep.
From five to seven?
Yeah. Second by Cabal. How do you vote, Beldon?
Yeah.
Cabal?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Asher?
No.
Okay, fifteen employee wage, you want to tell? You want to tell them what the utility board did, Ash?
What?
On the way.
We just, the utility board approved Saberson.
And the union people are already on contract for, what, two or three years, is it?
Twenty-one, I think.
And last year, it's just one percent.
Yes.
Utility just approved three percent. The non-union employees.
So what do we base our, our increases on? Is there anything?
Well, everybody, there's a national. Oh, it's, it's, uh.
So they'd like taken, I, I know.
Yeah.
I can.
It's cost of living.
Cost of. We just do cost of living, we don't look at how they perform or anything like that?
We do, I do that.
I think performance evaluations have been brought up, what, two or three years in a row? They've never.
Why is that, though? I mean, as, you know, really, as a council, I think, you know, it is our job to make sure that stuff gets done because we're spending these guys' money. You know, and we need to be sure we're getting the best bang for our dollar. I go through a personal evaluation of my work to get my raise. You know, it's not, it's not based on, well, you know, cost of living, like here, you get a three percent raise. They don't do that. They just don't do that. So. You know, I, I personally would like to see him going forward. Won't say we have to do them now, but I would say anything going forward, there has to be some kind of concrete.
This needs to be brought out of public or budget.
This needs to be brought out of public, our budget meeting in, in the summer.
Right.
And that's why this needs to be brought up because I agree with you go now, but then this has been said three and four years in a row.
Right.
Um, that we're gonna, next year we're gonna look at it. Next year we're gonna look at it.
Well, well, maybe.
Done.
Right, well, maybe if we start now and we bring it up and say, going forward, you know?
That's what I'm saying, going forward and then bring it up in our budget meeting too.
And, and then that way, there's some sort of metric that we can figure out. Uh, I know I got performance reviews from a small, a city smaller than us when I went to that uh, council workshop over in Ben Mider. Uh, I think that's fair for citizens of Stewart, that we step up and do that.
So controlling that information, if you look at everybody's employee information, that comes out of the packet, it's gotta be controlled, it can't be shared. So the mo, you know what I mean? So you have to figure out how you're gonna.
Right, and that's just part of the process.
I'm with you. Maybe it's a one pager that says.
No, exactly, yeah. And we'll discuss the reshu.
Yeah, I think we really need to be serious on that. Um, and, and move forward with it, yeah. I know it's too late now.
Last year we did what?
One percent. But we also keep in mind that they don't, nobody pays health insurance and all that other stuff, I mean, which is an added benefit.
We did large increases, please.
Maybe what can we do two percent across the board?
Is that with the police? Or with that one?
Is that Ash or is that the mayor? Mayor of the police department, is that for everybody?
Yeah, across the board means everybody, yeah.
We got it. No seconds, anybody else have any?
Well, I think we're still talking.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I don't have a problem with the two percent. I think that's fair. It's just that I also think that our police department got a very large raise last year compared to everybody else. So maybe one more year without that extra incentive that everybody else didn't get. I, I don't know. That's just kind of my thinking. Because they took quite a bit of an increase.
Yeah.
I mean, it was needed, don't get me wrong, but.
Nick, thoughts?
What?
Thoughts?
Thoughts? I just, I put my thoughts out there, two percent across the board. But I haven't heard anything yet.
Christina, you, you know, you'd mentioned, yes, they get health insurance too, but there is quite a few, well, Renzo was a perfect example, quite the utilities can make substantial more money. Union work, you know?
Oh, you're talking about Sean?
Sean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just.
As I said, they boosted up wages, the utility had to do that so they could get some employees because you could go basically anywhere and do.
But, but here's another thing, when I was, I mean, just briefly, when I was looking at where, like, where the insurance stuff is coming out, I mean, so I asked for those breakdowns and I, I don't know if many people know this, but like Sarah Stouffer's health insurance is completely paid out of the sewer funds. And Ash's is completely paid by the utilities, which offsets each other, which is fine. But then you have Ben who works for the utilities, but then utilities don't have to pay any insurance on him because he's already automatically on Sarah's. And so, I mean, that.
That's their benefit for work, both of them working.
Well, I think, fine, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I mean.
Well, we said here, two percent, one percent, two percent, three percent for hours and hours.
I, I don't know, I just, I. You, you have one that doesn't, I mean, they don't have to pay for Ben, but we are footing the bill for Sarah and, you know what I'm saying? Because if they weren't, if Sarah wasn't completely from paid out of the city, then Ben would have to have it through the utilities. So they, the utilities get a little added benefit there that they don't have to pay another person's insurance. So I don't think two percent, I mean, when we're going with talking about health insurance and not having to pay that.
No, I agree. Yeah. Here's companies are reducing employees and not giving raises. So I mean, I don't like two percent.
What are you thinking on mix across the board, two percent with everybody?
I'm concerned on, I guess, when we did large substantial increases in one department versus not doing that across the board, they.
We just got done sitting here, Mike and I just got done sitting here talking about next year, we're gonna go through each and every employee. And that, at that point in time, you could say, okay, you get two percent, you get four percent, you get six percent, whatever. Now it's just, it's just, that's my opinion, it's just two percent across the board, let it be done for this year. And that includes everybody. So.
That's, that's just my opinion and you guys can do it every one.
I, I personally like, and you know, all we're doing is trying to make an argument on which is the best way to go.
Right.
That's, you know, we're not.
I don't get it, one of them are wrong.
Yeah, we're not trying to do, outdo one another or, or say this idea, but you know, uh, police did receive a substantial raise. You know, they, they got what they, they argued for, came in.
How many years did they not have that?
They, but, but they got it, right?
Yeah.
Right, and other people got a one percent raise, you know? So this year, if we give everybody a two percent raise besides police and then we can relook at it next year. We see there's that argument that, you know, they got the raise, nobody got a raise, a big enough raise, they didn't, you know? Sarah Stouffer didn't get a raise like the police got last year, no?
And, and they're just not getting, I mean, a one percent last year, three percent. I think they got higher than a three percent raise when we.
I think so.
And I also, and I think the ones that would have really only effect would be Katie and Dave, uh, they took a, a bigger increase, but the other two are on an academy based yearly set schedule anyways. I don't know how that works, you know, with raises and stuff.
I'm gonna vote for two percent because when I call, I want them to come to my house.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well, if they're not gonna come based on, you know, not getting their two percent raise, so maybe they wouldn't have salary at all, you know? But, uh, I would, I would.
Could I say something? Would that be all right?
I can't hear Dave. Dave, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Dave.
Okay, sorry. Um, I, I, I would just like to point out that those raises weren't based on necessarily performance. Those, those raises were based on leveling the bar of what the state standards were for those specific positions. And we did that research and we provided it to you guys. So I think that that brought us to where we were supposed to be, I think, across the board. Now, as far as that, I think we also discussed, I'll be fair, I think we also discussed when we brought those plans up that, uh, we were also willing to consider not going through with that raise or the, the normal cost of living raise because we did get that incentive. But I just, I want to make sure that when we have this conversation as a, as a group, that we understand those raises weren't given to us out of a, you know, it wasn't a gift or it wasn't a, uh, you know, a, some sort of advantage. It was more or less to try to bring salaries up to where they are across the board in the state of Iowa. So I think if, if another department head or another department felt that they weren't getting paid what other city workers at that specific job were getting paid, they would have every right to come up and bring that argument and show proof and say, hey, you know, we looked at fifty cities and out of those fifty cities, we were second to the bottom in salaries for that specific job like we did. So I don't, I, I totally understand what you guys are saying and I, I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that we, we say the right things when we say it, that those weren't raises just to give us more money. Those were raises to make our salaries more fair across the board comparing to other police departments, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, David. And I have to say that I work side by side with the police every day, going in and see the caseloads they have. And a lot of the drug busts that they've had lately, five or six of them, aren't publicized in the paper because one leads to evidence to another one. And they've been very swamped and you go in and look at Katie's file and she has case after case. And when they make an arrest, it doesn't just stop with the arrest, it's just hours and hours of paperwork these people have. And I don't know, I, I, I still feel that they need to raise myself, but that's up to the council. I don't have a hope.
So did I, was, did I make a motion for the two percent or you're being the least?
I, I made a motion for two percent.
And I don't think anybody, yeah, but I don't think anybody's seconding it.
So it never got a second.
Okay, you second to that. We need another motion.
Mike, Mike made a two percent excluding the police.
Yeah, this year.
This year.
Sure. So we don't.
Yeah.
We have a motion.
So, you know, so towns have compensation committees, so why don't you two plan on doing that next year together?
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Be there right with you.
Fine.
I'll be there with you.
Hopefully you aren't here next year.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second, how do you vote?
How do you vote, Belden?
Yeah.
Kavas?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Askin?
Yes. Doesn't have a choice.
Sixteen, Doug Galliano, uh.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thanks, Forrest.
I know this is a hot topic, Doug, on the trash. I talked to Scott Avi and he said, yeah, he thinks they hastily moved too fast on this discussion. I, I realized after that with your situation with the hill, he said he would work with the whole town and see if we want to implement some people alley, some people front, but we can't do both, you know? Yours probably get half day in the alley. Other people might be out front, would be better, but I'll let you talk, but I want everybody say here, let's do this, but I think.
I've got other issues to chat about.
Yeah, I know, I know. I read your paper there.
Dick, can I say something real quick?
What, go ahead.
So the, the reason why this came about, and I, I agree, we moved too fast in, in doing this and.
Amen.
Now that's, that's it, that's it.
The alleys are being destroyed because of the trucks and Jim and Corey can't fix alleys appropriately and then have trucks come through them. It's just destroying them again. And when I brought this up, it was because somebody from a city employee brought it to my attention. And so I talked about it during the public forum, asked for it to be on the agenda, asked for the appropriate person to talk to Scott Avi to make sure this is what he wanted. Because it was told to us that it was recommended. Now, I myself live on Harrison Street and I have a hill. Mine is not as drastic as Galliano's, but I do have a hill. So it's not convenient for me either. But when I was talking to Scott, he said that fifty percent of the town is already on a street basis. And I think moving forward that we can work with Scott and Scott can make those decisions as our garbage person on which ones, like Galliano's, that need to be in the alley. You know, because that doesn't work or, um, somewhere it was said that he was only gonna run north and south. And for someone like Lisa Sloss, whose driveway is on an east west road, it is not fair for her to have to walk through her entire grassy area to put it on the north south street. She would obviously continue to put that on her, her alley, but I think that should be under Scott's discretion on what he thinks is, it, it works appropriately and which ones, like, like yours, that cannot be put on that, that much of a hill. But I think that's something Scott needs to, you know, I mean.
What Scott told me was, is just, just get with him and he'll work things out with you guys on the garbage.
But we'll let Doug talk here.
Yeah. I've got complaints that I think should be taken care of, and I think this council makes some damn decisions long before they talk to anybody else in this town. This town has a lot of senior citizens. And when you start saying, I've got to walk from the alleyway, clear across the yard in the wintertime when snow is knee deep. You sit here and that make that decision. Are you gonna come down and take my trash from the back alley where it's always been? You remember, I moved here in eighty-two back to Stewart. I was born and raised in this town. I probably know this town better than half you people sitting up there. The property you're talking about, I was born there. That house is over a hundred years old. The sale barn, which we've fought with you for years over because after the fire, I remember standing out there watching the fire department work their butts off trying to get water to that sale barn. That alley is the only way that I can get to my property and I got my daughter on one side and my niece on the other side. There's not a way you can get into that alley only by driving through the alley. Harlem Street doesn't mean a damn thing to me. That alley is maintained by me. Since I moved back here in eighty-two, that alley has been serviced twice by the city of Stewart. Once we paid fifty fifty to get rock put on it. There's been one time and I seen the snow pile go through there because I've maintained that alley. That alley is having more traffic than you peoples ever thought because that sale barn was used with big semis carrying people, carrying hogs, cattle way back there and that alley is maintained by me. I put more money into that alley. That is my street. This idea of you people sitting up here making rules and then never backing them, that's what gets the people in Stewart upset. Don't tell me about the alleys. I've looked at many of these alleys. That's what I did after I got no vacation that I was gonna have to carry my trash from the back toe front. The only time that I've ever had people come in that alley of the city, they brought in great big chunks of asphalt. They've taken off of somewhere else. They threw it in my alley. They removed two tires and I never got repaid for them. We finally had calls. They finally come down and picked up big humps of asphalt taking them back out. So people, you know, I fought with you people, uh, since I moved back to this town and all I get is Brian and Mr. Cook sat there the last time I was in here. Doug, we'll make this a one-way street because when you come out of my alley to the south, it's the most dangerous place to work. I've got big red buildings sitting there. I've got landis trucks sitting there that I cannot see in one direction or the other. And I'm supposed to stick my neck out there at eighty-nine years old and get hit by a damn corn truck? That makes me mad too. You've got problems that you people could solve if you would get busy and do it. Go make a rule and then five minutes later decide you're gonna change it here. That's what this town has done for many, many years. It's time this council grows up, start making a damn rule and then enforce it. I drive around this town every day because I'm retired. I tell you what I see. I remember here a while back, we made a, a, a big deal over people not mowing their yard. The grass gets up to eight inches, the city moves in, has somebody cut the grass. You remember? There's many people elderly in this town that have very little income and you charge them, I have heard, as high as sixty-five dollars to have their grass cut. That's a bunch of bologna. But we've got city workers, three men in a truck riding around, sitting down in the sale barn lot, wasting damn time. Why aren't they out there mowing some of these?
You must be talking about utilities because we only have two city.
Well, I don't care who it is, whether it's utilities or the city, I've seen them down there, Mr. Cook.
Yeah.
And when you put three men in a truck riding around, that, that's a little bit unnecessary. So I'm up here arguing. I'm arguing for myself and the city of Stewart. It's time we start making rules if you're gonna make them, enforce them. Now, my big question right now is that sale barn. That sale barn, uh, how many of you people have skunks? Uh. Running through your yard? How many of you people have, uh, raggeds coming into your garage, uh, upset and breaking a stand of open paint? Uh, get down there spraying over a brand new, uh, Jimmy convert. Answer me those questions. How many of you has had that?
I've got skunks and possums and badgers.
Yeah.
Groundhog.
I get your frustration when you come out of that alley because like you, I get, I live right by, in between R and D and that other house. And the house, the residential house has big bushes. I can't see the cars at R and D, I can't see. So we have to use the other end of the alley. And we do have big potholes because we have gas trucks coming through, we have propane trucks coming through. I mean, we, so I get your frustration with that. It's, it's very difficult.
Right, I'll agree with you. When you sit here as a. Right. I'll agree with you. When you sit here as a council and tell me that you maintain alley, I'm, I'm going to disagree with you. Because I have a sister that lives up here, have holes as big around as I can make. The city took a big hump, a cement. I don't know where the hell it got it. They dropped it in the, the hole at both ends. You can drive through that alley and you just not lose your car on both ends.
But I think the problem with the alleys is, is that we have these big trucks going through and so eliminating that will assist Cory and Jim in, I mean, when you guys go to fix these big potholes, what kind of machine, I mean, you have to get way down in there, correct, to properly fix it?
Yeah.
And so it takes time. And so if we can help eliminate these bigger trucks going down these alleys, we're not fixing them as frequent.
No, you sure are. I'll agree with you.
Right. So that was, that was the purpose of moving the, the trash, but in your situation, that's not feasible. I understand that and I mean, Avi can work with you guys to get that back.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I've heard you talk about your alley before I was on council. I know it's bad. I've seen it. I've drove, I've driven through it. I just, I don't know what the right way to go about maybe getting that fixed. I don't know if it's something we need to discuss with Jim and Cory and, and try to figure out or, or what has to happen there.
I'll tell you the issue. We don't have enough help.
Well, that's true too.
So, so one thing, uh, you know, I don't even know how many alleys the garbage truck went down. You know, they don't go down my alley, you know, they don't go down the alley to the south.
People can put it on the street or either.
But, but what my point is, is are they, are they destroying a significant amount of alleys in Stewart? I've had the same, since this came up, I've had people approach me about the maintenance in the alley. They say it's non-existent. Whether that's true or not.
I, I'm going to argue with you because the maintenance of that alley by the city of Stewart is people.
Well, that's what I mean. They're telling me that they don't see the city maintain, maintain.
I've seen that city through that alley twice. And both times they've done more damage to my alley and if they just down, I would, I'd be tickled to death. I'll maintain them myself. Because I put the rock and everything on it anyway.
But I think the problem is, is we don't have enough help right now. We have so many things going on with our public works.
This has been going on for years and years and years.
I understand. I'm just saying, we're within the last few years. They don't have the help. I mean, they don't have the time to dedicate to alleys and to, I mean, we have a tree problem right now. If anybody's noticed, we have ash trees. How many trees are going to have to come down? How many of them, I mean, so we've got ongoing issues and by trying to eliminate some of the causes of the alleys, it's going to help. So when they do maintain them and they can get in there and they're right, they stay right.
So my, my thing as a council member, and I'll only speak for myself, is that when, when I voted yes for that proposal, I did it without researching it and finding out enough information before making that situation.
And I think you all did.
You know, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just speaking for myself though, but you know, I think we needed to look at that and say, you know, which alleys do those trucks go down? Which ones are they actually tearing up? You know, are those the ones that we can have moved to the street? You know, I, I don't know what the solution is, but I know we jump too fast.
But my question is this. If you people are going to sit here and make that decision, are you going to guarantee me that they're still going to pick up my trash in the alley? That's what I want to know enough.
That's what Scott told me he was going to do. Pick your trash up in your alley.
I, I'm all.
That's exactly what Scott Avi told me. He said he's picking your trash up in that alley.
Hey, Scott Avi, you on the phone?
He, I mean, it says right there, so is Kim.
It may be Nadine and Kim. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay. But.
He told me that one and he told me the one over there, uh, it'd be the north end of Mary's Alley. That I, he don't know what he's going to do there yet, but he's going to talk to you about it.
Oh, good. Now, the last thing I want to call their attention to, they have finally started to clean up the sale barn.
I noticed that.
And it's about time. Since that fire lay there, and I'm sorry that it burnt down, nobody messes it any more than I do because that was part of my granddad's farm.
Yeah.
And so therefore I mess it as much as anybody does. But when you let stuff lay and you let it veil that, you've still got some of these pens out there that have been burnt. I want the rest of it cleaned up. It, it devaluates my property.
Is that on the nuisance?
I talked to.
If I, if I could speak on that one, I'd answer that.
He's going to try to get it out.
Dave's talking.
Dave. Can you hear me? Dave, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, so that was on the list when we started taking back over on the nuisance stuff. And I know Nadine was having problems finding an address to send the notice to, but she did finally locate one. So it has been, they did get their notice and I have seen him over there working to, to clean it up. So it is on the list and hopefully it'll, it'll get done here shortly.
Okay, thanks, Dave. And Doug, so you know, and everybody in here, quite a few years ago, we passed an ordinance where the alley is an extension of the street and the homeowner dude, it used to be fifty-fifty. You pay for rock.
Yeah.
Now the city, if you need rock, the city is supposed to come in and give you rock. Call Nadine.
I'll be, I'll be more than happy to do that. But now I want your word that the rest of that sale barn will be cleared up.
Well, I hope it is. As I say, it's on.
We gotta, we gotta make it happen.
Yeah.
You're just telling us and you're just saying that we've made promises and we don't do it.
Dave said it's on the list and he's working on it.
So Mick, I was, um, I'll represent Stewart's sale barn tonight.
Yeah.
So things have got out of hand. Things have gone into a new, long hair doing it. And so if you provide me with a list of things you want to do, see me after the meeting, leave it at City Hall, wherever you want to have to, make out your list that is specified and we'll make sure that it happens and moving forward, we'll be taking care of it.
I tell you, ma'am, I'm sorry, uh, and I've got to bring it up because I felt like that should have been done by the city council many years ago.
Many, many years ago, which has been that way for a long.
But in the last, last couple of weeks.
I don't know if you can get in on their, on their web.
I can't really.
Many years of that sale barn operating.
Is it Scott?
They're learning this. I love to park anywhere in the yard. They did it on my yard. They did it in the alley. Now he decides that he calls the police.
Look for trying to ask for you.
In Los Angeles with my youngest daughter, has the policeman go down, knock on my door, my niece having to get there. They wanted me to move a truck, which was getting very, it wasn't even touching. I don't know what its property line is. I bet he doesn't know.
I believe it's been a two-way street and we need to move past that.
Yes.
We need to move past that. We also need to know, he's also letting you use the security line on the alley at your expense to pay for that. So you have safety in your home. It's a two-way street on everything and I think moving forward, we all need to be good neighbors and you provide me with that list and we'll take care of it.
I sure will.
And you have a more.
Somebody on the phone.
Well, I think Kim was trying to, I think Scott maybe, Scott's with, I just got confirmation. Scott Avi is with Kim and they were trying to talk on the computer.
I don't know how, am I on there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, I've got Scott on speakerphone. Go ahead, Scott.
Hey, Scott.
I will work with anybody that is on a hill, what have you, where I know you can't get out or you know you're a handicap. I do this all the time.
What are you saying, what are you saying you'll do, Scott?
Well, I can, I can, I can say a few places where I know, like Galliano, yes, that is a hill there. There's no place to put it.
Over there by Sloss's.
Over by Sloss's. Um, down at Jack's uncle's old house. Well, I got, if, you know, they're, they're elderly and there's no place to put that. So I will back up to that. Well, there's two other houses there on the corner. There's no reason why theirs couldn't be out there either. You know, as, as I'm going down there, if I'm going to go down some of them, I mean, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Scott, I told him that, that, uh, they have a problem to get a hold of you.
Scott, do you think, Scott, do you think that you could just get us a list to City Hall on which ones will go back, the ones that you know that need to go back?
Wait till he does it a while.
Oh, yeah, 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 I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck.
And I just, I was going to say, probably next, and I think a lot of the questions have been answered for me as well. I will definitely get with Scott and speak with him directly and make sure that, you know, we don't have any issues. My mother's eighty-one, so I'm sure that we can probably work something out. Our concern was obviously taking it through the yard, especially in the wintertime. Um, I will just kind of address the alley maintenance very quick. I know one of the things that you, that we've kind of said to ourselves is, hey, um, our concern here is that there's a lot of trucks going down the alley. I live on the four hundred block of North Harrison Street. It's not necessarily due to truck traffic because there is no trucks. It's just Avi going down essentially, once essentially we. It's just how everybody gets into their, into their house on that specific street.
Their garages or anything.
But I will tell you guys, I mean, we've owned this property for many, many years. I will agree with Michael Doug. Nothing has been done with it. We've put our own rock down as we see it and I will give the city credit. We have called up here and we have actually asked for it to be done. They do come that day, but they only spend about fifteen, twenty minutes when they're there. And they do just essentially put asphalt down and all it does is glob up. It comes out of the hole and we got a hole and then we got a big old piece of rock that we're going around. Nothing is actually really getting done where we're actually putting some money into these alleys or doing anything. So to make this decision based upon alley maintenance doesn't really seem to make any sense to me. So that's all I kind of got to say.
Thank you.
I say one thing really quick, Dick.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's been a lot of talk about this trash and I have been working with Scott and trying to come up with a plan on getting trash cans bought, um, to allow, you know, the one sixty-four gallon, because that's what we're allowed, right? Like sixty-four gallons of trash.
That's awful big for elderly people to try to.
I understand. I'm just saying, we're trying, or maybe two thirty-twos or whatever maybe, but we're trying to come up with a plan and work and see what other towns are doing. So just so everybody knows, we're in the process. I just, I didn't want to throw it up in the air and say, this is what we're going to, you know, like we did last time. I'm trying to come up with a plan and
Yeah.
go from there and make sure it's the right way to do it. Make sure that we're not incurring the costs for that and maybe if there's a grant out there to help ease that cost that we can go about that.
So can we ask Jim to give us some options on the alley maintenance plan? Because.
There, there's.
What's that?
This is Galliano.
There's one other problem I think you, you people should look into. Uh, you know, I mentioned it before. There's a propane tank that sits right on the edge of that alley. The most dangerous thing in the world. You drive down that alley today and if you didn't know that tank was there, it's all covered with weeds, all, all trees. If somebody had actually ever hit that, we'd have one of the worst kinds of.
Is this Landis's?
I don't know.
Landis's?
I think that's two homes. You set right on the edge of the alley. It's really a dangerous thing.
Okay. And another thing, Doug, to go back, we changed the alley for the cup restaurant over here one way. And the council, it's got to be an ordinance change. And if we did that on yours, we'd have to change ordinance. You're wanting to come in from the now north or the south and go out the north?
The safest way would be running from south to north.
Yeah.
I mean, but that would take the danger of the big building there and the trucks would take it. A lot of times we can't see.
Does, does, does that alley? No, does that alley still wash out there on that hill?
Uh, a, a little bit, but we, it's not bad.
Okay. At one time, I remember it used to wash out really bad.
Okay, I'll see if I can talk to Jim and Dave and look at that and possibly we might have to do an ordinance change and put that one way.
Okay.
It does, it does if it, if we get a lot of rain.
Yeah.
And when you have a little city vehicle like I have, sometimes it's really difficult to get through there.
On the south end and go fast.
I had to do that.
Okay, eighteen, minimum city code ordinance, chapter seventy-five.
That's me.
Oh, Utah. I didn't know if Dave was going to be on here too.
That was me. Um, so a while ago, um, I was approached, well, Brian brought it up about golf carts and it kind of died down and I was approached by a couple other people about four-wheelers and stuff like that. And so I went and looked at the code to see what we have currently in our city code as far as, and it's outdated. The definitions are horribly outdated. Um, and I would, I wanted to talk about adding a golf cart to that same thing so people can drive their golf carts. I know one person in particular would appreciate that. Um, I did work with, um, some people and they're nice enough to come and join me. If you have any questions, but they're avid ATV writers, so they know, you know, decimals and, and different pieces of the puzzle when you look at stuff like this. So I'm just asking that we add golf carts to chapter seventy-five. We update these definitions. And then when I was looking at the Iowa code, um, I wanted to add the sections about headlights, taillights and brakes to make sure that's in our ordinance. So people know that you have to have those to be able to use those types of vehicles.
License plate.
Yep. There's a, a registration fee. Not only do you have to register with the DNR, but you would have to register with the city. And we could look at that one of two ways. We can have the police department do it and I've talked to Dave and I've talked to Jim and and I've shown Ash and tried to do all of my research here. Um, but you would get a registration fee. You would need to keep that displayed somewhere on your vehicle. Uh, there's a code section for that. And then it talks about the registration renewal. Um, the registration fee was recommended thirty dollars a year. So however you want to work that, but that is something that I would like to see get done and get this updated and add those things.
Have a flag on too?
Uh, golf carts maybe.
Some type of a triangle, orange triangle or yellow triangle, whatever.
I mean, I've, I've been working with Cory and Crystal.
Some do, some don't. Depends where you go and how the cities want to write that.
I was going to say, is this kind of modeled after another city's?
Well, we, we already had it in our code section.
Right.
And so I, it was very big. So I kind of, I've, I've looked at three or four different ones just to see how they write them. And, um, the registration fee was in all of them. Um, the penalties, there's a section in here on penalties, on civil penalties and what the cops can do along that, that, as long as the definitions are in there. I mean, I think if we just. It updates it. I mean, it's, snowmobiles are already in here.
Yeah, I know. What does it say on that?
It says that they can.
Quickest access route out of town.
They can comply with the following restrictions. The streets, they can only, upon streets that have not been plowed during the snow season and such other streets is made to be designated by the council. And then there's a few exceptions. Um, it doesn't allow for people to be riding in parks and stuff like that. That's already in there.
What I remember is that they could do the, the quickest access out of town and if the ambulance or fire department needed to get people to the station, then they could use the snowmobiles to do that.
And then, um, for the streets, what like, there's a spot in here where you can put certain streets that they're not allowed to ride on. And when I talked to Jim, he said, I believe it was H Street out by Carl's and then the two, you know, obviously Whitehall Road and the highway.
Division.
Or sorry, division and then Highway six. Um, but farm, farm people are exempt from that anyways.
Agricultural use, you can use them.
But.
But if you, but how do you define agricultural use in town?
They, that's already set in the.
Agricultural use in town?
Well, like for us, we do live in town and our four-wheelers are in town, but we also have cattle all the country.
Okay, but that, that's not egg use in town. I mean, that's.
I don't think there'd be.
You can't, you can't, I don't see how you can have an egg used in, in the city of, city limits. I don't see how you can do that.
Yes. Right, but it's to get to the egg. Yeah. So they, I mean, right now without any, if we didn't have a city ordinance, they would still be able to go from their house to their cattle. So I am asking.
Just open it wide open for everything.
I am asking that we update chapter seventy-five.
Who's going to have do that then?
I mean.
Beverly or?
Honestly, Brick would probably be able to do it pretty quickly just because a lot of these other towns, I mean, we're just updating some definitions.
I think we had this, this before Dexter.
Beverly couldn't find that information out.
Had a real simple one and like excluded, uh, Highway six, you know.
Yeah, Dexter didn't, there was a couple things that Dexter didn't have that I thought were appropriate. The civil penalties, the registration fee, things of that sort.
And he has it too.
Yeah.
Need a motion to refer this to Steve Brick.
So moved.
I'd like to refer to Beverly. Make a motion.
I'm gonna ask her to be to Steve Brick. I don't, I want it to be quick.
She said to Steve Brick, Steve Brick.
My motion was to approve it and refer to Steve Brick as the.
So do we have a second on Christine's? Second, okay. How do you vote then? Vellin?
Yeah.
Kavon? Renzlo?
Yes.
Askren?
Yeah, no.
Okay, small business, nineteen, what's that?
Um, so this would be like Los Altos, Mick had that. Um, this would be similar to, uh, the cup that's active, Ruby's. Uh, small business succession planning. I want to check with our bond council to see if there's any type of incentive or program that exists in other towns and then stick in your bag up for next month to look at.
For what? What is just?
So, so there's a lot of ad hoc requests that come through the chamber or seed. Does the city offer this? Does the city offer that? Well, we don't have anything that's bona fide.
I thought that's what we paid the, um, I thought that's what we paid seed for in, in Dudley, President Dudley.
Kristen. No, Kristen. And Kristen did this on housing, like that abatement program she had put together. She got with the bond.
We don't still have that program because she's gone or what?
We have the program, but that was for housing. You're talking about business.
This is a business succession planning. Wouldn't cost anything to get the information from them if they've got it from.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, we need a motion to the first.
With my Kavon?
Second.
Second, my Renzlo, how do you vote? Vellin?
Yeah.
Kavon?
Yes.
Renzlo?
Yes.
Askren?
Yeah.
Okay, public forum.
Um, just real quick, uh, I, uh, talked to, uh, Forrest, uh, and I may have talked to Ash, can't remember if I called him or not, about parking on South Seventh. By Casey's, Southwest Seventh. Um, there's been some ice that parked there along the curb outside of the, of the parking on both sides, on the north and south side there. And it's gonna create a big jam. Now, I was told that there's no parking out there, but there's no, no parking signs for the curb. There's a big sign inside the parking lot that says no parking along the curb, but I think they, that means inside the parking lot. They're supposed to keep that, that open so they can pull out. Um, I don't know if you need any kind of a study or talk to the police or whoever. Um, but would like to see some no parking signs put up there because it's gonna create a big jam at some point.
And that's what address?
Uh, Southwest Seventh there, right by Casey's.
Yeah.
On both sides.
On both sides, yeah. Cause I've seen them parked on both sides.
You gotta do a study and then have coordinates to put the signs in.
So with parking issues as well, Burger King's. I've referred that same issue.
Oh, Burger King's turned into a huge truck stop.
Okay, just, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I, I would just say that I agree with that totally. I mean, I.
Everybody else have anything?
Yeah.
Right. I had a couple things. Go ahead.
So on the alleys, it's, I mean, there's always reoccurring issues on alleys. Can we ask Jim come to the next meeting and give us kind of a plan on how we can get into a routine maintenance on, on alleys? So it's not a. Yes. So we're kind of ahead of it before.
Yeah.
And then on the nuisance properties, I don't know if everybody saw Beverly's update on that, but that, that's been a question like with Burger King and, and the other ones. Uh, I mean, the question is whether the council wants to spend money on that, right? So.
I think on Darrell's property, I was told this morning when I was getting my morning drink that Darrell and somebody else had been over there on Saturdays and Sundays cleaning that up.
Yeah, that's what I saw via the email.
There's health issues too, but yeah.
Yeah, he had some health issues, but they've actually been over there and they're turning stuff.
Oh, yeah. So.
Putting something.
And Burger King, they had a crew come in and they mowed it all.
But they still didn't get to clear up the road, right?
No, Jim said, I said, who's is that? And he said, well, there's a boat. He said, he's gonna try to reach down with this big mower on the skidload during that time, you know, but there's a lot of sucker mauled by her trees and stuff.
Okay, so they actually did. It wasn't us, unfortunately.
No, 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 they did. They had a crew come in and do that.
All right. So what is she supposed to do? I mean, Beverly's asking us what she wants us to ask her to do with Burger.
Well, that's, what I hear is a.
Abandoned building or not?
Long, long time lease and that's what the problem is. We're waiting for the lease to get up and then.
But I mean, that, this is.
What, what are we talking about? We're waiting for it? How long?
The email she sent to all of us said that it would be treated as an abandoned building, but she's not sure how confident it would be.
Who owns it?
Tasty King.
What?
Tasty King.
But somebody who owns a building.
Aren't they gonna do anything with it?
I didn't.
Nobody knows. Has anybody contact, tried to contact them?
That's what she's trying to do, but.
Beverly is.
And she sent him a letter, like a.
Well, let her, let her, let her finish going out, you know, talking to them.
Well, that's, that's what we're asking. The question is, it gets more and more expensive, the more, uh, the deeper she gets into this because, I mean.
And she's wanting to know that we want her to continue.
Well, if we take it away from her, we just give it to Steve Brick. So we might as well just let her have it.
Okay.
The, the question was, is just for her to continue to the next step?
Yeah, Steve really wasn't involved in it.
I think so.
And Edwards is, they're making progress on the one across from the tavern. I think that's within six weeks, I think.
Yeah. So, yeah, the IRS just answered and I think Beverly's wrapping this one up, so.
Does, uh, Duane's still on that ground behind up to Archie? Ever did know? Behind where? Behind Archie.
Um, yeah.
One of the families. Okay.
Um, on the seed interview for Kristen's position, uh, does anybody else want to be involved in the interviews at this point since?
Yes.
Yes.
I would too.
I, I will.
So Warren's gonna, um, Warren Barley's gonna work through the next step. So I'll just tell them to contact the everybody.
Where are we at right now with it?
Still moving through the process. They haven't interviewed, uh, folks yet. We've interviewed folks initially, but they are still, were.
Because she had some health issues, had, had issues of their own. They weren't able to join. They came up last minute and they weren't able to join Brian and Ash and I for the initial interviews. So they're gonna do their initial interviews, which is nice because then that gives other people the opportunity to sit in on those interviews. And then it can be discussed for the second round.
Okay. I have something. If, unless you'd wanna go next, Dick, I don't.
No, go ahead, Matt.
Um, Christina, I was told that, uh, that you told some people that they weren't allowed to play soccer on the football field over there. Is that right or not?
Nope.
Okay, well, that's what I, that's what I was told. I was told that, that you told them they couldn't play on it because they'd have to fill out all kinds of paperwork and stuff like that. Well, that, your name was brought up, so that's.
I'm sure it was.
All right.
Okay, at the moment, the mower, you wanna talk about that more? Mick asked me.
We're working on those fields over there and we're, we, I bought that drag. Mike knows I bought the drag. And I'm, uh, bringing it up to the city council again to buy her, this time I wanted to buy a mower, which is, it's a John Deere two fourteen. Um, it's in good shape and they want six hundred and seventy-five. I brought it down from eight hundred to six seventy-five. And I need permission to go buy it, I guess. And if you guys don't give me the permission, I'm gonna buy it on my own. So it don't make any difference one way or the other to me.
Mick has approached me and I told him we have money left for, in the park.
So I was called by Jim Henderson last minute, right before the meeting regarding his issue.
Call you.
It doesn't matter whether he called me or not. He wasn't, he, he's the head of the public works. And if something's gonna be bought.
Buy it myself. Don't worry about it.
If something's gonna be bought, it should be discussed with him.
Don't worry about it. I'll take care of it myself.
So I went ahead and discussed the situation with Mason Hasty because him and Bob Cook and Clayton Scott have been reviewing the Clayberg mail. And I was told that the mower was actually gonna be bought from the Jim Clayber fundraising.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
So, and they got another donation today.
Yeah, I know they did.
So.
I've been involved with that too.
I'm not saying you're not. I'm just saying I was told that they were buying it out of fundraising. I would like to see them continue because we have mowers.
You don't wanna believe everything Mason tells you.
That's where I stick with that.
Okay, uh, Katie, I got a question. Uh, a neighbor up the street had a camper. And he was told he had to have a rock underneath it. And another neighbor across the road doesn't have rock under his. Do you know what our code is?
I believe, I have, like, read it and find that.
I mean, we'll, we'll get together tomorrow and we'll figure it out.
I don't know more than ever, Hannah.
I could, I could answer that for you. I don't know the.
Okay, Dave.
I don't know the specific code off the top of my head, but there's some conflicting codes. If you look at the, I think it's in one forty-eight section of city code. It does say that vehicles, trailers, things like that have to be parked on gravel. And, or a hard surface that can't be parked on grass. But then we have other codes that kind of conflict with that. So in years past, we, we, um, enforced it and then we were asked not to then, um, you know, we had a code enforcement officer. I don't know whether he did or didn't. Um, you know, so it's kind of, it's a gray area.
Dave?
Yep.
This is Mick. I don't understand. At, at one time it was on the boulevards that, um, that you had to have gravel on those to pull your car up on that. But for people that have cars all over their property, they got a one little bitty gravel pad and there's where the car parked. That's where they let it sit.
Yeah.
And it's all over, you know, it's all over properties that, that they put, they've been told that all they have to do is put enough gravel underneath for the car.
Yeah, so the, like I said.
Wrong. I think that's misleading.
Can we research this, see what our code says and clarify it? Cause I've been told that we were supposed to have trailers and campers underneath rock.
That's.
But I see people all over the place that have tons of cars and trailers and they're not on rocks. So if we could just get a definitive answer, you know, and the answer and.
Okay, they can check on it. I got one more thing. We had our town cleanup Friday and Saturday. We had five or six young adults working and my brother and myself, Molly.
I was on Facebook about twenty times.
But anyway, we ended up getting six containers of junk out of here, three metal. I haven't got the tonnage yet, cause I think some I'm still sitting over at the city shed. And by my figures, we had two hundred and five people use this service.
Well, I would like to say thank you. It was amazing and very helpful to a lot of people. It looks a lot, I wish more people could have taken advantage of it, but I think it was nice that we, that you offered that day of pickup.
Yeah, that was.
And it helped a lot of people out.
Thirteen, fourteen people, they went and picked up the stuff. And the appliances, a trailer was chock full and that didn't cost the city a dime because they all went down to Valiska. They could resank them.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I would like to go back to number four. Oh, you had a closed session. I would like to know when the landlords get to know anything.
You guys can all sit here and keep it a secret, but you know.
I was approached by a council member.
Right.
Asked questions. I asked questions. I didn't interact answers about a lot of things that I want to know. And that's why I've been sitting here the whole time, because I wanna know what's going on. Number four, I own land.
I think the public deserves to know too. You have sat there how many times? And said worried about taxpayer's money. And you're spending money on lawyers and, and, and engineers and stuff and now not even letting them know what's going on?
The answer is we're not allowed to say. I know it's a, I, I know it's a bad answer, but.
You chose to do it that way.
Steve Brick recommended that everything that was said during closed session stays in closed session. And so.
I'm the landlord. I can't know what's gonna happen?
I understand that your frustration. I'm just saying, I, I don't know what the answer is.
Nothing would happen to you, was it voluntary at any level? I mean, sir, that's all there is.
Can you write that down for me, Mr. Vellin, for our newspaper?
Yeah.
Okay, because when the council changes and other people come in and they wanna do something different, I'm not okay with that.
Yeah, it would, there's no way for it to. I mean, it's just always too.
So when are we gonna know anything?
Is this something that maybe she can call Steve and Steve can?
Yes.
Tell her as much as he can. I mean, I, I just don't wanna say anything and get in trouble because we're not allowed to say anything under what we discussed. I, I understand this and I understand the frustration, but with Steve not here, I don't know how much we can disclose.
So I'm gonna ask one more question.
I got a question.
So is this, no, no, wait, hold on. Is this an all? Everyone has to sign this?
No, you don't have to sign it.
Is it all or none?
You, you don't have to sign it if you don't want to.
There are any circumstances.
Okay, but my question is, is you start wherever you start and if that person signs and I don't sign and the next person signs, you're gonna annex my land into that because they all signed around me?
If they get eighty percent. If they get eighty percent around you, then yeah, you're gonna have, you're basically.
Eighty percent of what?
We can't be saying anything, Mick. You, we're just, Steve just told you, you can't say anything.
Don't correct me.
I am correcting you because you're gonna be putting us in litigation.
Don't correct me. I can say that.
I would encourage you to talk to Steve Brick. Call him tomorrow and.
Why do I have to talk to the attorney though? That's what I don't understand. I only have it up for county. I pay my taxes, it's up for county.
I understand that, but we can't tell you. I mean, we were.
You can't tell me, but I own the land.
I know you own the land. I get you're frustrated, but if I could tell you everything, I would, but we were just told we couldn't.
Because you chose to go in closed session and not reveal it to the public because you wanna keep it a secret.
It wasn't just my decision.
No, it wasn't just your decision, but you're sitting here, you voted to go in that.
I did.
Session and now you're, now you're sitting here saying you're constrained by it.
Mike, you, you yourself have never went in closed session unsupervised.
Okay, so, so why would we be any different? Why, why would we be?
Yeah.
That was read, that was read right there, you know, with there's the possible litigation.
We followed the attorney's recommendation.
That's why we went in closed session. Yeah.
We're not saying that we are. We're not saying we're not. We went under our attorney's recommendation to go under closed session. There's nothing.
It says or where litigation is imminent. So you don't have to be in litigation. Imminent. So you, you take that as, well, you take it as you want. Then why do I, I don't need to answer that for you. You, you formed your own thought. You can do that. So you, whatever im- imminent means to you.
I mean, I think.
This is why you have came to the county and you say relationships are so bad. And this is why, because there is no, there is no talking back and forth. It's just you guys doing what you're doing. And I said, and you guys, you guys annexed the church out there. And I was there at that, he, uh, at that, uh, hearing the other day. And I was lied to. Cause I checked into it.
Because Ash didn't say anything to you? Because you were in the annexation hearing for the Catholic church, not about anything else? And Ash said he can't talk to you about it. I don't think that's lying. He's just telling you, he can't talk about it. For the same reason that we're not allowed to talk about anything.
Why, 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 what is going on? The annexation for the church or?
Yeah.
You asked me question about annexation for, that's something different. You came to, I think.
The hearing for the church.
We came to, I think, public hearing for the church. You're asking me.
And you said, I don't know. You have to ask Beverly Wild. I went to it and I asked Beverly Wild and Beverly Wild said, I'm doing this by the direction of the council.
Okay, so who lied to use it?
You did, cause you said, I don't know why they're doing, why we're doing this.
You asked me about something completely different than what the hearing was for. The hearing was for the church. You're asking me about the ethanol plant.
I don't know why we're here for the church. I don't know why this is going on. That is what you said.
You, I said to you, I don't know what's going on. If I'm, if I'm setting for you to come and say something, you didn't say anything. You're asking me what's going on.
What do you mean I didn't say anything? I even said I want parts of this on record.
You're all in record, but you were talking about the ethanol plant. I tried to correct you.
I was talking about the church also.
You said you want me to tell you what's about the church. Tell you what, you're supposed to come so I can hear you. You wanna hear me.
Two and, and then they will tell you what I, what was going on there. Yes.
Well, he was there. He recorded. We recorded you and everything you said.
Then we can listen to it too, because we asked why the, why the, why the church came to you and wants this annexed.
It was all in your packet. We gave you a packet that was written and supervised by the city attorney, Beverly Wild. We handed it to you. I am there to listen to you. You didn't tell me anything. You're coming to tell me, tell me what the story is. Say, it's in your hand. Certified mail to you or we mailed it to you. You're supposed to come and give me your concern. You did it. You asked me about the ethanol plant. What is that has to do with that?
So he was sent certified mail because of, he's a county supervisor?
We, we said, Beverly sent to all those people to attend.
Because they're supervisors.
No, 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 because he was affected with annexation.
Because the county was affected.
Yes.
So, yeah, so the supervisor, I'm trying to figure out whether this is a personal issue or if it's a supervisor.
I even asked, we were talking about as supervisors, those are affected as a, what about you?
And I asked, why is the church asking for this? What's going on? Why is this being done? And I was told, I don't know.
Did you ask a member of the church?
They voluntarily asked us. I can't question them. Voluntarily asked us.
But you told me, I don't know.
I don't know what the reason for them to ask because it's voluntary.
Mike, did you ever find out? Mike, did you ever find out?
Yes, I did. No, I didn't find out.
Okay, Ash, can you explain it now, what was going on with the annexation of the church?
They voluntarily asked us to annex them.
Who's, who's the, the church did?
The church leaders.
And the waiver was handed to him in, in a mail. Certified, so he has.
Did you answer his question that day?
Yes.
No, he didn't.
He's saying, no, you didn't. So, so answer his question now.
Okay, you asked me why the church is doing that. I told you, I don't know. That's a voluntary. They asked us to annex it. You asked me why. What would, what, why did anybody pressure them? I told you it was voluntary annexation. They asked us. So you need to talk to them, not to me.
I'm gonna need to talk to Monsignor Carey.
Oh, I, I found out what was going on.
So this is ready, when it's a voluntary annexation, I don't know why they asking us. This is a misunderstanding that if you came to me and sat with me trying to see what everything goes into the place and I would have explained it to you. I told you, I don't know why they asking us, because I don't know and I still don't know. It's a voluntary annexation.
Maybe you don't.
I, and I'm still repeating myself. I do not know. It's voluntary. They asked us to write in to annex it. I can't question them and I didn't pressure them or anybody pressured them. It's.
Who was the guy with you, Mike, in the meeting? Was that a member of the church?
You was there, Mr. Mayor.
I was there. Was he representing the church?
No, he's representing the township.
The township.
And Patty McAnders was there also.
And the mayor was there.
Yeah, McAnders, I know she was there.
So it, it just kinda worked.
Either way, when we, we sit here and talk about voluntary annexation, that isn't council members going out and trying to coerce people into.
And that's what you told me at that hearing. You told me that, didn't you?
Oh.
Didn't you tell me that at that meeting? And I, what, what was my response to you? That we're not here to talk about.
You didn't know anything about that and I believe that.
We, because it's not the time and the place for talking about that. That's who's my response. The mayor was there, the deputy clerk was there and it was recorded. I answered all your questions. Whether you liked it or not, that's fine. You have the right to do that, but it's not lying, because there's no reason for lying. It's a voluntary annexation. What to lie for? They asked us to voluntarily annex it.
Okay, anything else? Mike? Anybody?
I don't know. I think we have people here that will want to hear more about that because it affects more than just a view of you up here.
Yeah.
So.
It affects the entire town. It's where we're taking it step by step.
It affects minimal too.
Yeah, yeah.
It affects a lot of people.
It affects Guthrie County.
And you don't wanna talk to anybody about that.
And it's confidential if we just talk.
Yeah, it's confidential. But if the Guthrie County supervisors were gonna do something, they would be taking the same exact steps if they had a situation where they needed to go into closed session. You guys would be taking the same exact steps that we are under any other circumstance. I just, I don't see why you think it's so bad for us to go into closed session to protect the city.
Because I've been coming to these meetings for two months now because I was told that this was gonna be brought up. And you guys are in closed session about it.
Because we're protecting the city and we're doing what our attorney recommends, just as the supervisors would do that their attorney recommends.
Don't speak for us, Steve, please, make some up.
So do we.
Yeah, I know you do.
You know. So why, why are we any different? You know, you're supposed to represent Guthrie County or are you supposed to represent the town?
Well, I don't understand.
Right?
Well, then don't act like we're in trouble.
Yeah, don't, I mean, don't try to say that we're doing something wrong or even insinuate it, like we're out coercing people. It's just like, you know what? Oh, have we? That's big and presumptuous.
My Calva's ethics.
It is, it is, because when you sit here and say things are voluntary, but you're going out and asking them to sign them, then they're not voluntary. Voluntary is, I'm coming to you saying, please annex me.
I didn't go to law school, we're following the direction of our attorney, so I guess he's guiding us in this approach. It's what he does for a living, so.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we're, we're protecting our taxpayers and Guthrie County's not looking out for us, right?
How's that?
I mean, are you guys helping us with the road? Are you helping us at all? I mean, you guys, you guys kind of forget about Southern Guthrie County.
No, we don't, really. You, you just owe me one other town that we have helped with financing.
Well, only in.
One other town.
A, a dare? Well, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
I said, so I mean, one other town that we have helped finance on.
Um, I guess, I don't know your, your bond. I, I'm saying our partnership with Adair County is completely different than our partnership with Guthrie County. Completely. They're night and day. They're polar opposites of each other.
I don't, I don't why you're, you know, it's because we treat them like.
They partner with us so we can grow the tax base and we can expand.
Did you not come back and we were gonna, we were gonna work with you on this, and you said no.
That's right.
You didn't say no.
You did too.
I wasn't here. I didn't vote on it.
Or are you talking about allowing us to use your bonding capacity, but us still paying the bill? Is that what you're referring to?
So how does that, how does that contribute?
And then we were doing the, we were gonna have, having P G V I perform on our projects too.
But then that puts us under a circumstance where we have, we're relying on you that if you wanna do the road in the winter and we wanna get it done now, but allowing us to use essentially your credit card, but making us still pay the bill, isn't helping.
So Adair County's paying your bill? Oh, what are we doing every other county, county, when they come and wanna pay all of them pay the bill? Adair County's paying your bills?
There is, I don't know, did, I don't know.
Adair County pays your bills?
I didn't say that. I said the partnership between Adair County and Guthrie County with Stewart is drastically different.
What's Adair County give to your library?
What's that?
What did Adair County give to your library?
Our library's in Guthrie County, I think, isn't it?
Why does Adair County give to you?
Yeah, but Adair County people use it. And they don't give us anything.
So can I ask one more question?
We still have two bonds on the books right now for road damages.
So I believe that Christina Renzlo said earlier that the city doesn't have enough people to maintain the roads, whether now or in the winter. So if something did happen with this annex west, how is the city going to maintain that road as far west as they have to, to keep it open?
Just to refresh, I said alley is not right. I'm sorry.
But there is roads in town that they cannot take care of, that are in the city limits that are not taken care of either. I mean, we can go that route if you want, but that's a question to put it back in your mind. If they can't take care of what we have right now, how are they gonna take care of more?
Who helps your law enforcement too?
Oh my gosh.
Not your family coming up and helping, is it?
Uh, they do.
Oh, they do.
A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're, I, I, I don't wanna get into a.
But you already did.
Pain match over who does what.
I thought you talked about, I thought you said another county or another versus city. I didn't hear, I thought you said the county versus.
We're not getting anywhere with this.
Anything else then, people? Huh?
Thank you.